I would like to call to order the Valdosta Board of Education regular meeting for April the 11th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. At this time, we'll have invocation by Dr. Mosley.
Well, and Heather, we're thankful to be here today. We ask for your presence and your guidance as we do and discuss the business of the best of the schools. We ask that you be with all staff, students, as we continue through this year and be with those who have been victim violence recently. And recess is in your name, Jesus' name.
Do y'all please join us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon. I want to welcome you all that are here and welcome those that are watching this Facebook Live. At this time, may I have approval of the agenda?
Somebody, second.
All in favor? At this time, may I have approval of the minutes from March the 14th, 2023?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of March 14th, 2023.
Any abstain? All in favor? Do both. May I have approval of the minutes from March 21st?
Madam Chair, will we accept the minutes as presented from March 21st, 2023?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Please make note to review the minutes from March 28th. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hudson.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair, for your board tonight. We would like to recognize Ms. Jennifer Steely as a scholarship winner for the National School Publication Relations Association. Ms. Steely has been an active member of both the Georgia School Public Relations Association and the National Public Relations Association since joining the Valdosta City School family in June of 2007. Ms. Steely has served the state organization as a member service director and as the 2008 GS-PRA conference chair. Through GS-PRA, she has earned several honors and awards such as the 2009 Maria Wolford Professional Growth Award and the 2019 Annie Raymond Distinguished Service Award. As the district PR director, she has also won dozens of publication awards over the years and many of those were selected as best in category several years in a row. Each year, the state organization offers a scholarship to the annual national school PR conference. This summer, that conference will be held in St. Louis, Missouri, and Ms. Steely was one of three recipients selected for a scholarship to cover her registration cost to attend the 2023 All-Aboard Destination Success NSPRA Annual Conference. This $875 scholarship will afford her the opportunity to spend three full days in extensive hands-on professional development in the area of school public relations with hundreds of other school PR professionals from across the country. This will be her fourth time attending this national conference. So this evening, we would like to recognize Ms. Steely for this honor. She has been, she's a great PR director for our district. She goes above and beyond, and she does an awesome job, and this is a well-deserving scholarship for her. So tonight, we just want to say thank you, and we want to recognize Ms. Steely for this award.
At this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Childress. And please make note that this is information only.
Thank you. It's my pleasure tonight to, I was going to introduce all of our students who have qualified for Nationals. We've got a little over half of them here, even though they all confirmed that they were coming. But I'll go through the ones that are here so they can come up. Start in the corner with Jacob Campbell, who is qualified to go in to Nationals in Duo Interpretation. He's also our second place winner at the state tournament in humorous interpretation. Okay? And then we've got Jessica Mulhoney, who's qualified to go in dramatic interpretation. Brayden Anderson, who's qualified in the US Exterparania Speaking. Hannah Childress in Lincoln Douglas Debate. Marzel Usher in Lincoln Douglas Debate. And Jacob's partner in Duo Interpretation, Ada Brown. And then the ones who aren't here or aren't here yet are Jason Abbott, who's one of our seniors, and he's a three-time qualifier, and he's going in US Exterparania Speaking. Armire Dukes, a junior, who's going in World Schools Debate. And her partners in World Schools Debate are Tamia Howell, a sophomore, and our only freshman who's qualified, Malachi C. And... Is that everybody? Did I leave somebody off? Okay. So these are our national qualifiers. They also all qualify to Varsity State this year, where we won second place in speech interpretation and fourth place in debate. So the only team outside of Atlanta Metro that qualified, that qualified really for Nationals and that placed at state. Guys, you're gonna have to speak together, or did you like each other?
And while we're coming down, if we have any parents here, please stand. We want to recognize you and thank you for being a part of Valdosta City Schools.
All right, Ms. Childress, are you gonna get in there with her?
No. I'm positive. I'd probably have a coffee fit, and everyone would pull out their masks and run away.
All right, I'm gonna count to three, guys. One, two, three. Oh, I did that on two. One, two, three. One more. All right, good deal.
All right. Ms. Childress, on behalf of the board, we want to say we appreciate what you do for the students at Valdosta High School and the debate team. Each year, you work very hard to have students prepare for state and national, and we appreciate what you do with our students. So thank you for the work that you do.
I work with the best students in the country, so it makes it easy.
And to the students, we want to say that we're proud of you as well. So thank you for being a part of Valdosta City Schools, and thank you for what you do, and we wish you the best at state and national. Thank y'all for coming. Thank you. Congratulations.
At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Steely.
All right, I'm gonna begin. Okay, I think it's... Let me see. Hello.
Hello.
How are you all?
Good.
You can't see up close, then you put your glasses on and you can't see right away. Hold on, I can't, can't get it to go back up. I don't think it feels it. Sorry. I promise you, it just, let me get past. There we go. There we go. Sorry, guys. All right, I just want to kind of give you a brief update. Well, how are you?
Good.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry. I just wanted to give you a quick update. We've done some great things in the line of parent communication for our district. I know that is always something that we really, really talk a lot about in the district. And one of the things that we, sometimes I feel like struggle a little bit with, because we do have a really transient population, and we will see sometimes, especially at the elementary level, that we may have some of our elementary students, that they may be enrolled in our, all five of our elementary schools in one calendar year. And so sometimes keeping up with them in ways of communication, whether it be an updated of a phone number, an address, things like that, can be quite a challenge, not only for the district, but for the teachers as well. So about a year ago, I started looking at different options for communication tools for the district that would really be a one-stop shop for a lot of things. And that's not just to make my job easier, but also hopefully to make teachers and administrators' jobs easier as it comes to the way of communication. So over the summer, we worked with Aptigee. They are a website provider. And in addition to the website, they offer a number of other communication tools. But I'm gonna start with the website and tell you a little bit about what we have there. I'm telling you, I'm struggling with this vision thing. I love growing up. It's fantastic. So we did launch a new website over the summer, and I know that you guys have probably seen the homepage. And it is a little bit of a struggle, because even though the GoCats website stayed the same, the individual school addresses did change. So what we've seen is people were still kind of, and some were still cleaning up, were linked to their old web addresses. The old web addresses might have been like vhs.gocats.org. And now, because it's a different company, it's not the same. So we're trying to still go through and clean up some of those things and get people to go and hit the right sites when they're looking. One of the things that we have realized, though, is that a lot of people don't always just go to websites anymore. Their first stop is social media or an app. So we are super excited that in addition to the website, it now speaks to our app. It speaks to our all-call system, and eventually it's gonna speak to another program that we call Rooms that is all-in-one with this system called Aptigee. But I just wanted to kind of roll through the website really quickly and kind of show you a few things. At the top, you'll see we have a permanent link for our student-parent portals. That's most, what you guys know is Infinite Campus, where you go check your students' grades, see attendance, things like that. We have a permanent link now for registration as well, since we've really kind of started pushing online registration. That's always available. The other really popular site that we are connected with is Find My Bus Route. So if you have a question about what bus your student rides, where the pickup site is, what time they pick up, what time they drop off, that's all right there. And then, of course, employment. I know Mr. Clemens is always looking for good employees in Valdosta City Schools. The other wonderful thing about this program is we have the ability to translate into several languages. So while we look at it just like this, if you're a family that speaks Spanish, you can come here to translate, choose Spanish, and it will translate the whole site for you. We've got, it looks a little different on this screen, and again, it kind of depends on what the size of your screen is as to what your website will look at, look like. But we've got a number of other important things here in the next level that we felt like people would want to go to or things that were required by federal law to post, like our parent involvement plan. So right now is a hot time for pre-K and kindergarten registration. Next month, this House Bill 251, so we'll put that link there. We always want people to become a community partner. People have a lot of questions about their zoning map, which school they're zoned for. Then the next section is just different little bragging points that we have, programs that we have. Then we have our news section. We have our live feed. We have more headlines. Then on down is the district calendar, and the district calendar is just what it says. Anything that anybody sends me with a date and time, we put it right there. So all of your sporting events, if we have parent involvement events that get sent to us, sent to me, we will put that, I'll put that on the website. Any board of education meetings, things like that, all of that is listed there. Again, programs, we've got links here to our anonymous alerts program that Director Smith has told you guys about as far as making an anonymous tip or if you've got something happening at school. And then, of course, we've got our foundation link. And then we can, down here on the bottom, just spotlight different people throughout the district, whether it be students, staff, administrators, whatever. All those things are interchangeable. The other thing that I really love about this company is that once a year, free of charge, they'll move it all around for me to make it look fresh and inviting. And I like that, because our last website, we had for about seven years, and it looked the same for seven years. So with Aptigee, I can go in and say, all right, I think it's time. I want to move the picture down. I want this block to be here. They do all of that free of charge. The other thing that I love about this program is it's connected to a portal called Thrill Share. And Thrill Share is kind of like the back door or the administrative side of the website, where I go and make all the things happen. It's not pretty like this, but it's where you put all the content. I love it, because if I don't understand something, I have a chat with their company 24/7. If I have a question, I can call them. If I say 911, within 30 seconds, somebody calls me back, and it is amazing. The day, we're just, what I like to refer to it, on November 11th, when we had the incident that turned out to be a really fantastic live training, but was super, super scary. I had had surgery. You guys know that. I was working from home. I called them. I said, I need help right now. There are some phone numbers that aren't in here. And within, I think, like seven minutes, it was updated and ready to go. They were willing to help me. They were like, what can I do? Here's, here's your message. I'll put it anywhere you need it. You do this. I'll do that. But the great thing about Thrill Share is it's a one-stop shop. From the backside of the website, I can post to the web. I can post to social media. I can also do an alert with all the same message, just by clicking which places I want it to go. So in the past, where I would have to stop and I would upload something to the website, then I would have to go to the other system, do an all-call. Then I'd have to go in another place and do an email. Then I would have to open up our social media outlets and post to those separately. Not anymore. It's all in one spot, which is absolutely amazing. So that is our website, and now, oh gosh, now what have I done with my, what have I done with my presentation really quickly? Let me get that pulled back up for me. Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, so that's the website, and like I said, it also automatically connects to the app. So if, oop, I've already told you a little bit about the alert system. Let me go back. I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. But on the alert system, you guys should also get those calls too. So if you're even at, I think you guys are entered technically almost as an employee. So whenever I click staff, you should get the calls. Many of you are also parents, so you probably get the calls and texts that way as well. But we have the ability to, again, one time, I can click email, text, or all-call, and I can put all the information in one spot and select what time I want to send it. I can do it immediately. I can just do an email. I can just do a text. I can just do a phone call. And then it also is connected directly to our Infinite Campus and our attendance portal, so it does daily attendance calls. I know several of you probably have gotten those as well. Those are very helpful to me as a family when a student is absent, and I know I get that call at a certain time in the afternoon that tells me that my child was not at school that day, and that is a very useful thing for our families. So next, I'll talk a little bit about our app. So we had an app before, and some people may still have the old app downloaded on their phone. It is still called Valdosta City Schools, but it is a completely different app. If you have the old app downloaded, which is kind of where we are now as far as really starting to push our families to, hey, we have a new app. Go download it. It's free. This is gonna be your one-stop shop for everything, because it pulls everything from our website and our social media sites. You can customize it as a parent or as a stakeholder to cover whatever you want. If you only want to see information from Valdosta High School, you can just choose Valdosta High School. If you only want to see information coming from a district level, you can just choose the district. Or you can be a busybody like me and choose everybody so that you know what's going on across the entire district. Because even though I post a majority of the stuff to Valdosta City Schools, each school has their own set or person that is in charge of a set of PR coordinators or a PR coordinator. It's their responsibility to keep their website updated, to do their social media, those types of things. So I may not necessarily know about every single event that's happening at the schools. And now, in today's society, with the constant need for, I need to know right now, it's very helpful that we have those people in place at those schools that are walking around with their phones, that can automatically upload those things immediately to their social media sites. So, we're gonna spend the next few weeks, we have thirty-three days left of school this year, and then a few days of summer that we're gonna really push to download the app because what we really are excited about is a new feature that's associated with all of this called Rooms. How many of you have ever had to sign up for Remind, GroupMe, ClassDojo? And it's not just one Remind, if you've got two kids in high school, it might be fourteen Reminds. If they play sports, it might be twenty-four Reminds. The thing that is gonna make life so much easier for all of our families is Rooms because it's directly tied to our student information system. So, say for example, we have a student, I'll, I'll just choose one of my own children, just say, my oldest child decides that she's gonna take chemistry, where she gets in chemistry, she's like, shoot, mama, I didn't want AP Chemistry, I meant to do Honors Chemistry. She goes to her advisor, she gets that switched, but then mama doesn't get any of the Reminds because she hasn't gotten the AP class Reminds, she signed up for the chemistry, the honors Reminds. That's not a problem anymore because now at night, when that automatically populates through Infinite Campus, that student will be moved to the correct class. As long as the family has downloaded the app and has the Rooms feature activated, which we will help them through over the summer, they're automatically moved to the right class. I don't know about you guys, but it is so hard to keep up with all the different Reminds and the, and the GroupMe's and the things like that, and then I look at my GroupMe app and I've missed twenty-seven messages because I've been looking at Remind instead of GroupMe. We hope that we're gonna solve all this. And the wonderful thing about Aptogee is, again, they provide one-on-one training at any time that we want it. So, if, I'll pick on Ms. Crenshaw. If Ms. Crenshaw's at Lomax and she has a trouble, has some trouble with it, she can schedule a one-on-one meeting with this group and they will train her just by herself. They don't have to have a whole classroom of people to make the training possible. And I love that because if a teacher decides at five o'clock in the afternoon that she wants to do that when she gets home, so it's quiet and nobody's messing with her, she doesn't have anything going on around her, they'll do that for her, and it's amazing because she can give her undivided attention and learn, ask specific questions, and it's just wonderful. So, I'm really excited because what we're doing with this now is we're having pre-training up until we launch this so that our teachers understand how it's gonna work, how they set up their classrooms. They'll get canned messages that we can send out to parents that say, hey, have you downloaded our app? And when you do, make sure you click the Remind bo, I mean, the, the Rooms box so that we can talk to you one-on-one. It's also a way that if, if my child's teacher needed to tell me something specifically about my student, it's also one-on-one communication, not just to the whole class. It also integrates their Google Classroom. So, when they're putting their class, daily class assignments in Google Classroom, it automatically speaks to Rooms. They don't have to do a separate thing like going into Remind and saying, hey, today's assignments have been posted, go take a look, it does it all for them. So, our hope with this is that we make it easier not only for our staff members, but our students and our parents as well. Um, and it can also do clubs and organizations. So, if you have a student in Girls on the Run, we can set up a Girls on the Run. If you've got a football player, tennis player, swimmer, beta club member, debate, whatever, you can set up these individual classrooms. I will tell you that before we bit the bullet and did this, I had some focus groups with teachers and parents with Aptogee that showed them how this worked, what it would look like, how, how it would feel, what, you know, all those things. So, we got lots of feedback from people that would actually be users before we decided that we were gonna do this. They've created videos for me, posters, flyers, social media blurbs. So, in the next few weeks, y'all get ready, you're gonna see lots of information about the app and about Rooms so that we can really get people to download and start using this before school starts so that come July one, when school supply lists hit the stores, it's gonna be there and they're gonna know. And even on the school supply list that we send to the stores, I'm gonna put a little QR code that says, hey, download our app while you're shopping. So, anyway, super excited about that, I think it's gonna be a wonderful tool. This is just a quick little, kind of show you how simple it is for me on the backside. It's just a matter of clicking buttons, and it'll be the same way for teachers. They will be able to do it from a desktop or from their mobile device if they download the, it's called Thrill Share app. And it's just, it's just simple. If, if they can type in a Word document, they can do this. You can upload pictures, flyers, all the things, and it just makes life a whole lot easier, I hope. So, again, they do offer free training, I mean, I guess technically it's not really free, but we've paid for it with, with our contract, but anytime, and it's just gonna be something that I hope really helps open the door to communication for our families. Whether or not we have the correct phone number, the correct address, we can still keep in touch with them and they can still be involved in their students' education. So, I know that was really quick, that was a lot of information, but do you guys have any questions about any of it? Alright, well, thank you so much, I appreciate the opportunity, and I'm excited. You guys tell your constituents to please take a look and download all the good stuff.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Alright. I'm gonna turn it back over to Ms. Childers. And this is at tonight.
Good evening, thank you guys so much for considering, um, allowing the debate team to go to the national tournament again this year. It's an exciting time, we're planning our fundraisers and meeting with community members right now.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the field trip request for the speeches debate team to go to the national tournament as presented. Say it.
Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you guys so much.
Good luck.
We'll bring you back.
There you go.
We'll bring the kids back definitely. We'll try to bring something shiny back to you. Thank you.
Good luck, y'all.
Okay, at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Hudson.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, Board, you have before you some information in regards to the redistricting lines for voting for both the city government and the city school system. You, you all have had this information for a little while, and so tonight, what we need to do is the Board needs to approve this redistricting map for voting of those, the, the Board of Voting conditions they're waiting for, for our approval before they can move on. Once again, this redistricting map for voting is done to balance out the district population as much as possible for voting in, in the, in the, in the districts. So, again, tonight, we need to vote on this. If there are any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. The, the, the districts didn't change that much for each of you. Again, they're just trying to balance out the voting numbers for each district.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the redistricting lines for Board members as presented.
Any discussion?
Doctor, the last time we talked about this, I asked a question, and I will ask it again tonight because a good friend who's not with us tonight is going on, Dr. Crane, and one time they left him out of the, this district, so, uh, is everyone still in their district, for the record?
Yes, for the record, everyone is still in their district, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Alright, new business, first read of Board Policy IHE Promotion and Retention. Uh, tonight, I wanted to share the first read for the revision of this policy. Uh, the revisions for this policy are as follows. The Board has decided to do away with mastery of minimum reading proficiency levels as determined by the district in regards to promotion and retention. So, you'll notice in this first read that that has been stripped through. So, for first and second grade, the final grade average of seven or above in English and math is what would determine promotion and retention. Third and fifth grade, final grade average of seven or above in all four academic subjects, math, English, language arts, science, and social studies is what would determine promotion and retention. And sixth through eighth grade, a final average of seven or above in all four academic subjects, English, ELA, math, science, and social studies. Also, a student must have an average of seven or above in three out of the four connections grading segments. So, this is the proposed revised promotion and retention policy, first read for students in grades K eight for our district.
Um.
Okay, uh, the next item, uh, purchase of a special needs bus for our transportation department. Again, this is actually required for this tonight. Tonight, you should have documentation on the cost for a special needs bus. This bus will cost us a hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars. We will use our school bus allotted funds of eighty-eight thousand one hundred and ten dollars from the Georgia Department of Education towards the purchase of this bus. So, the, the, the state is giving us eighty-eight thousand one hundred and ten dollars toward this purchase. Therefore, our portion of the cost will be seventy thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars. And again, this purchase will be paid for out of this current year's transportation budget. The money is there, it's already been allocated for our bus, through our bus replacement plan that the Board has approved. So, again, um, just want permission from the Board to move forward with the purchase of the special needs bus to u- update our fleet, our special needs bus fleet.
This is at tonight.
So, move.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Alright, Madam Chair, um, final report is a superintendent's report, and I'll quickly go over it. Uh, just want to bring you up to speed on where we are with East Flock Six, March twenty-twenty-three. We received revenue in the amount of one million four thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars and thirty-six cents. Also, I want to bring your attention to student enrollment for the month of March. You've seen it for the past three months, but March, March enrollment, student enrollment was eight thousand two hundred ninety-two students. March of twenty-twenty-two, enrollment was eight thousand one hundred and eighty students, okay? Also, district power bill, I wanted to bring that to your attention for the past three months. January twenty-twenty-three, our district power bill is a little more than a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. February twenty-twenty-three, it went down to one hundred and fifty-nine thousand. March of twenty-twenty-three, our power bill for the district was a hundred and thirty-one thousand six hundred fifty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention in regards to the power bill, and a lot of that has to do with demolition of the old high school. So, that, that's a good thing, that's, that's a cost savings for us. Last thing on the report, uh, student achievement. I want to share student achievement results for our star screener for reading and math. If you look, ELA grades one-eight, what I have highlighted, the spring administration, we had twenty-six percent of our ELA, we had twenty-six percent of our students in grades one-eight, one grades one through eight that scored proficient on this star reader in the ELA compared to last year, this time, twenty-four percent. So, that, that's growth, and that's what we want, we want continued growth. Um, ELA pre-K, um, there was nothing scheduled May first through the twelfth, so when I get that, I will share that with you. Math grades one-eight, spring twenty-twenty-three administration, twenty-four percent of those students score proficient or above compared to last year, this time, twenty-one percent. So, again, we're seeing, we're seeing small growth, and that's what we want to see, we're gonna continue to work hard. And I applaud our teachers, our administrators, our coaches for the work that they're doing to try and close the achievement gap, uh, in reading and math throughout our district. I want to share that with you all tonight.
Alright, um, at this time, may I have a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss personnel pending litigation and civil诉讼.
So, I can.
All in favor? We are adjourned.
I'd like to call back the order of the Los Angeles Board of Education regular meeting. At this time, I need a motion on the following personnel. Resignations. One pre-case sped teacher at Pineville Elementary. One ELA teacher at Villarosa High School. One sped teacher at Villarosa High School. One science teacher at Villarosa High School. One science teacher at Horn Learning Center. One first grade teacher at JL Lomax. One school psychologist at Central Office. One third grade teacher at Salus Mahone. One school nutrition assistant at New Bern Middle. One bus monitor at Transportation. New hires. One third grade teacher at JL Lomax. One science teacher at Villarosa High School. One social studies teacher at Villarosa High School. One ELA teacher at Villarosa High School. One science teacher at Villarosa High School. One Abbott teacher at New Bern Middle. One first grade teacher at Salus Mahone. One fourth grade teacher at Salus Mahone. One P teacher at Salus Mahone. One P teacher at Elsa Mason. One full-time custodian at Salus Mahone. Retirement. One intervention teacher at JL Lomax. Promotion. One junior ROTC teacher at Villarosa High School.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendations for personnel.
All in favor? All in favor? One district office, I need a motion for a district office staff recommendation for 2023-2024.
Second.
All in favor? At this time, do we have any board member comments? Reminders for board members. The Finance Committee will meet on Thursday, April the 20th, 2023 at 12:30 p.m. The 2023 CATS Award reception will be held May the 4th, 2023 in the Villarosa High School cafeteria at 5:30 p.m. GSVA 2023 Summer Conference will be held Thursday, June the 8th through Saturday, June the 10th in Savannah, Georgia. Conference registrations begin on Tuesday, April the 25th. Please let Ms. Kennedy know if you are interested in attending. At this time, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.